Good evening and welcome to the Mantino Village Board Meeting for Monday, July 1st, 2024. Let's call a meeting to order, and if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Voice?
Here.
Martin, Dole?
Here.
Crockett?
Here.
Geske?
Here.
Phillips.
We have a call. As always, we begin with the approval of the minutes in your packet. Everyone has received the copy of the meeting minutes from June 17th meeting. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the court. So moved. Motion by Geske. Second by Crockett. Roll call.
Geske?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Voice?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Phillips.
Motion carries. Does anyone have any objection with moving the agenda? We've got a swearing in of an officer tonight. He's here with his family, and I know they have plans afterwards. We move that up to currently? Okay. With that in mind, Chief, the floor is yours.
It's okay. It's okay.
Horrible position to be in. You're usually farther back.
I know. It's okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, we've got a new officer I'd like to introduce. For several years now, we've been talking about allowing new officers getting hired. We've had some retirements, and all those have been, for the most part, young officers and brand-new at the job. And that's awesome to get new officers in. They bring a lot of enthusiasm and energy into the job. But as we talk about, every time we lose one of these experienced officers, we lose a lot of, obviously, experience and knowledge of the job and history of the village and policies and procedures. So you've got to make that up over the years. Tonight, we've got a little bit something different. I'm going to introduce Joshua Spengler. He comes to us from Biloxi, Mississippi, and Gulfport, Mississippi. So he spent over 10 years down there, gained a lot of experience with those are busy departments. He's got a lot of training. He's an accident reconstructionist, level 1 through 3, which is a lot of training to get through. Aspen instructor. He's a field training officer, so could almost train himself here. Motor officer, motorcycles, ass, the whole thing. Verbal judo instructor. I mean, the list goes on and on. So he's bringing not only a wealth of experience and training and maturity that I think is going to really fit in well with our younger officers. So we're really excited to get him. 2018, he was Gulf Coast Officer of the Year. So we're really excited. And he's not coming here out of nowhere. He's got family very close by. He's from this area, not Mantino, but just north of here. So he's kind of coming back to family. So again, really excited to introduce Joshua Spengler. And Joshua, if you want to go around that side, we'll swear in up there and take some pictures.
Okay, would you please raise your right hand and state your name? Aye?
Aye, Joshua Spengler.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States?
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And to enforce all laws and ordinances?
To enforce all laws and ordinances.
Of the Village of Mantino?
Of the Village of Mantino.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
For the Mantino Police Department?
For the Mantino Police Department.
Of the Village of Mantino?
Of the Village of Mantino.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, look, I'm super excited to be here. I'm super excited for this town. We were here on a short visit a little over a year ago, fell in love with the place just by the few meetings I had. I was like, this is the place I want to be. This is where I want to work. This is where I want to put my time and effort into. The town has a lot of great things going for it. It's only on the move. It's going to grow. The community is amazing, and I like people. So I'm here to be there. I'm going to be front-run. I like to talk, so if I'm out, you're going to know me. So I'm excited.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was so nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming. Nice to meet you.
He will. He can live there if he could.
Congratulations, Josh, and welcome to Mantino. The next items on the agenda is public participation, so tonight, we will start off with Charmaine Albrot.
All right, guys, I'm kind of nervous. My name is Charmaine Albrot. I've been a resident for over 20 years in Mantino. Good evening, Board. Oh, please don't do that. But anyways, my concern is lately, the youth of Mantino. I have a grandson, it's 12 and 13, that I'm raising here. And on numerous occasions now, my youngest, I get a cr-. Keeps getting bullied by jail. So I understand the police can only do so much because they're minors, which really pisses me off. They can only go and talk to the parents. So it happened again. So on June 19th, it happened the first time. He got shot 13 times. Then Sunday, he was bleeding from that. So I want to know what we can do so this doesn't happen, because one day, it's going to get out of control. And they're always hanging over at that right park underneath the railroad tracks. Most of them are doing stuff they shouldn't be doing. But my main concern is, what can we do? So a few of the individuals got an ordinance ticket, but I want to press charges. But you can't, and you can keep going to these parents' houses, and they don't do nothing. So what can we do as a township so that these jaw blasters are not hurting little kids? That's my question to you guys. A jaw blaster, those high-impact jaw blasters? It's not a pain gun. They're like little jowls. Yeah, like that. They're little jowls, and they hit. So my grandson has welts all over his body, cuts. So that's my concern. There has to be a punishment for this. You can't keep going back to the- the police are doing everything that they can. You go to the parents' houses and tell them, but then they continue to do it. One day, somebody's seriously going to get hurt. They attacked four little boys on Sunday. And we're not talking, we're talking 13-year-olds doing it to 12-year-olds. So I don't know what you guys can do. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next commenter is Denise Nicholson.
During the Civil War, General Sherman's march across the sea or in Georgia to the Atlantic Ocean in 1864 was to prove to the Confederate population that its Confederate government could not protect people from its invaders. This brought the Confederacy to its knees and considered a victory for the Union because it cut supply lines in the South. Why did I bring this up? On today's radio in Cahokia, Illinois, the Chinese are buying out a factory grow marked along the Mississippi River. Do you think the purchase is just for the CCP economic growth or for future Chinese hubs to eventually coordinate a strike across the nation? Have you seen a map of the U.S. with all the property China has purchased? And here in Mantino, we've allowed, with the governor's blessings, a communist-owned lithium battery gigafactory who uses slave labor and commits genocide of the Uighurs to own land. Why? NBC's Chicago reported the slave labor is used to make battery parts used by Goshen in a Chinese province. Story, yet after one day, the news about slave labor genocide is silenced. Why? The Daily Journal never reported that story. Why? The facts are there with research. Did the train derailment in Madsen with hazardous materials put a chill down anyone's spine as a foreshadow of many possible things that could happen if Goshen is allowed in? Just curious if it crossed anyone's mind like it did mine. Saying, I'm sure many of us heard growing up, don't play with fire, you could get burned. I believe it's a matter of time for a perfect storm to erupt with enemy land purchased, millions of undocumented people crossing the border. None of us want to be in the position of, we told you so. On the eve of our country's independence, the colonists revolted against taxes. Yet we're giving our enemy tax breaks to operate and own a factory assessed originally at $58 million, sold at $137 million. And the mayor's statement when the sale was announced, quote, "That's a huge jump," Nugent said. "When I heard the number, I was floored. Obviously, we didn't know the seller and buyer were negotiating. That's a lot more than I anticipated. Sounds like the Chinese got the best of us." Or someone made pocket money. Isn't it shameful? Our enemies know they can manipulate Americans by throwing cash around, and Americans are greedy enough to accept. Happy 248th birthday, America. Hopefully, America will still be around and free to celebrate her 300th birthday. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Francine Fatima.
Good evening. Now, I wasn't going to speak tonight. I'm sure you wouldn't have minded that, but I decided to after all. I see that nothing has started yet on Cypress. I'm looking forward to seeing that being fixed up. I know it was somewhere between 30 and 45 days, but it's nearing the time when that should be proceeding. Regarding ordinance 24-07, having to do with that new community that's going to move in across from the elementary school, it's such a bad idea. It is such a bad idea. You see how congested it is with the buses and, which is fine for the elementary school, but why add, why add this subdivision in such a place? I just think it's a bad idea. Other than that, I'm certainly concerned regarding Goshen and hearing what Denise just read regarding the Chinese communists making more ground here in Illinois, south of us, here in Mantino. It's frightening, and I'm not easily scared. But I have to say that you all better just take another look at this Goshen deal because it's a bad idea for our community. And here, we see the new policeman and his family, and they're all excited about being in Mantino. I would wish I had shared that same idea. Having lived here 20 years, I don't have the same exuberance today that I did 20 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Bob Forside.
Let's talk about last week's meeting. Two comments were made, and I found them just- Wendell's was the first one. 84 years old, never seen people act this way. Wendell, this is the first board the people don't talk and answer questions, and you're part of the problem, too. Even when you put that public participation thing in there, I asked you to explain it, but you couldn't because you didn't write it. I'm sure somebody else put it together. And the second one was Timmy. Try to keep silent, say little, and you want everyone else to follow along. You have destroyed this town by yourself. You've made trustees dislike us. You've made us dislike trustees. They're decent people, but they're being led by an idiot, and that's you. Then you have us ask questions to the clown that sits over here, which is related to you also. And he danced around when I asked him, and he finally admitted that, yes, I'm related to Tim Nugent. But see, if he would have been silent, God, I would have never known. You know, Sam spoke last week. I like Sam. But yet, he did speak up, which was a good thing. But Wendell, 84 years, and you've never seen people act this way. We've never seen a board act this way. You don't answer questions. You don't represent us. And Timmy, I'm telling you, you really need to go. You overstayed your welcome a long time ago. But just do what you got to finish doing here. You got us Goshen. You know, North Dakota City, they voted down a Chinese company's proposal for a cornmill because they didn't want them here because of proximity to the military base. Do you ever think about the proximities what's here in Mantino that makes that site so good? Peattone Airport, Port of Chicago, Great Lakes, other airports, nuke plant? Lot of things make it possible for Chinese Communist Party to want to be here. You think we're not at war now, but we are. They're just taking over, and they don't even have to fire a gun. They don't have to do anything. But the other thing is, the 500 million, or the $500,000 park, the-
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you. Next commenter is Becky Green.
Did anybody consult the township about that park that you guys planned you spent a half million dollars on, a fishing pond? No, you didn't.
Ms. Green?
You did not. You did not consult because I called the township.
Well, thank you. Becky Green, I've lived in Mantino almost four years with my husband, and I've been a master naturalist for 14 years. I was previously the steward at a prairie site in southwest Aracoy County for 11 years. And currently, this is my third year as the steward at the Mantino Prairie along with Dale Bowman, who's also a master naturalist and a Mantino resident. We're going to talk a little bit later on tonight about the Mantino Prairie. And you've all been given little gold envelopes of pictures of some of the beautiful things that are happening out there, but there's also some, a lot of big work going on out there, too, with fighting invasives. So one of the important, very important management tools of a prairie is a fire, a prescribed fire. And I've been trying to find a licensed crew for over two years, and I think we found one with Tizzo and Associates out of Leland, Illinois. And they are, they perform more prescribed fires in the state of Illinois than any other business. And in fact, their executive director sits on the Illinois Prescribed Fire Council. So with that, and you might have some questions. Some of you may already know what a prescribed fire does, but in just kind of a nutshell, I can tell you that it helps to knock back woody plants, trees, which we have some out there. It also helps control some invasives, which are the weedy, non-native plants that Dale and I battle. It's a full-time job. But then it also encourages native growth, and it also enriches the soil. And also, our presentation includes a seeding. So this site is about five years old. Is that right, Jim? I think it's about, I think it's about five years old. This will be the third seeding, so that will help fill in the gaps where the native plants have not yet stretched out. So that'll encourage growth, and with the new growth, it'll help choke out some of the invasive, the weedy plants. And then one of the additions to this proposal is that they're going to add microhyse fungus to the soil, which is found naturally in native prairie remnants. So that fungus will help encourage native growth and help feed them, so these plants will thrive. Other than that, with after the burn and the seeding, and with Public Works Crew that it continues to mow a mowing path, a walking path, I'm sorry, around the perimeter, then we'd like to then open that more, open it more to the public, meaning that we can publicize it a bit more. People come out, come out and walk that perimeter trail. We could open up to tours and also to school groups. So we hope to make this more public, accessible. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
The next commenter is Ron Brown.
I was reading an article that was in the Vidaet, and I found it amazing that it said that silence is broken, and there was no silence broken here. Last week was just a little bit of frustration was put out, and a lot of you guys' arrogance was shown, but no silence was broken. And I wonder how, the paper said that we're supposed to be, Sam's not here, but we could get in touch with them, go to the, go somewhere and have a meeting with them and ask questions and get answers, but that does absolutely no good because nothing's on the record. You guys won't speak on the record. Maybe that's because of the court case. I don't know. But I just had questions. I'm wondering, when are we going to have a back and forth? Are you ever going to put up like a, maybe a town hall meeting, have a Goshen representative here? We've got a lot of concerns in this town. You guys don't give a crap about that, but we want answers. And silence was never broken, but like I said, you guys' arrogance just filled up the place. And it does tonight, too. And it hurts me to have to say that, but that's all I see. I look around, and I see a bunch of people that don't give a crap what we say. None. And it gets right up to here. But we need to be able to get some answers. I know it's not going to be tonight, but it needs to be done.
Thank you. The next commenter is Scott Franco.
I've got to follow some tough comments, but good evening, Mayor, Board, residents. My name is Scott Franco. I'm not a part of this community, but we think we want to become a part of the community. Our company is Surf Internet. We're a fiber provider. We are working throughout the region with other communities, other markets. We're working with some of the rural areas in partnership with the state and some of their broadband funding with grants. I'm simply here tonight just to introduce myself, and we hope in the near future, we could have an exploratory meeting with some of you folks to just sit down and take a look at what those possibilities may be. You may already be served with a provider or somebody, but typically, we like to reach out and see if we could talk with like your IT director, someone in Public Works Utilities Leadership, and just start having the discussion of exploring if it's even a possibility as we're working, again, with some other regional municipalities. So just an introduction tonight. We're going to be reaching out soon. Thank you.
Can you leave your card with Chris LaRocque, the village administrator? Thank you. The next commenter is David Keiken.
We've always asked for a dialogue to go on. We've asked a lot of questions, you know we have. We don't get many answers. There's just not much dialogue that goes on. And you try to avoid it. I mean, you have special meetings for your budget that I'm sure legally, you posted it somewhere in that, but there weren't any residents at that. And yet, at that meeting, the mayor, after everything was discussed, asked if there was any public comment, and he was asking in an empty room if there was any public comment. And just the way we've got this set up with the public comment at the beginning with no answers, and then like last meeting, there were answers by the board members here, starting with Mr. Martin, but it wasn't in response to that. I think Mr. Martin probably ticked off a guy here thinking that it was because of his military service and his disability that he didn't pay taxes. But I think what Mr. Martin was telling us, that the village gets, gives back their portion of our taxes, and according to Mr. Martin, therefore, we don't have anything to complain about. I don't care if you're using Aqua money or whatever money, it's our money. It's our money. Sometime, those rebates are going to end when you guys run out of that Aqua money, you know? So it doesn't matter where the money comes from. And then he said that this body had nothing to do with the CCP company coming to Mantino. Well, yeah, you did. You changed the zoning to allow them to come. And then he compared the Goshen and the CCP ownership of land with the Mormon Church and what they own in Illinois. Sorry, but you can't compare the Mormon Church to the CCP. Doesn't happen. And then everybody took their opportunity to comment on the Mantino Wildcats and how you don't have any authority over them and you don't have any influence over them. But yet, there was comments that you've given to all the sports programs. You've given to, doesn't money buy influence? Don't you have influence when money's involved? I don't know. I hate to, I've heard rumors that Mr. Martin's going to leave. I wish that he wouldn't. He was the only guy that had the foresight to vote no on this whole thing. And I know he complained about us thinking you don't do anything. I think you do a whole lot. There's a lot of stuff going on here, and we have to trust you. But you guys have to learn.
Earn our trust, too. As a trustee, you earn-
The next commenter is Mike Berry.
Last meeting, I stood up here and I put my heart and soul out. The decision's already been made, whatever. I'm not going to be able to coach kids. I coached for 14 years. But what really upset me the most was, is that there was conversation at the end of the meeting about how no one knew anything. We don't know anything about, anything about nothing. Well, Mr. LaRocque, here's an email dated from Mr. Nugent to you about questions about the Wildcats, Section 17 public accounting. Then he looked at Mrs. Dole and said to Mrs. Dole, "Only presidents of the organizations can sign the lease." That's what you said last meeting, right, sir? That's what you said. Well, here's an email from the lease that I signed in 2023, and I'll get you the exact date right here. May 16, 2022, for 2023 season, signed by Mrs. Babka. Mr. Nugent, Mike Berry, A.D., Mantino Wildcats. So all I'm trying to do is, at the end of the day, is that I got screwed, and I get it. Politics played a part, a big part in this, 100%. You could tell me any different.
The next commenter is Mike Berry.
Last meeting, I stood up here and I, I put my heart and soul out. The decision's already been made, whatever. I'm not going to be able to coach kids, I coached for 14 years. But what really upset me the most was, is that there was conversation at the end of the meeting about how no one knew anything. We don't know anything about the, anything about nothing. Well, Mr. LaRocque, here's an email dated from Mr. Nugent to you about questions about the Wildcats, Section 17 Public Accounting. Then he looked at Mrs. Dole and said to Mrs. Dole, "Only presidents of the organizations can sign the lease." That's what you said last meeting, right, sir? That's what you said. Well, here's an email from the lease that I signed in 2023, and I'll get you the exact date right here, May 16, 2022, for 2023 season, signed by Mrs. Babka, Mr. Nugent, Mike Berry, A.D., President, A.D., Mantino Wildcats. So, all I'm trying to do is, at the end of the day, is that I got screwed, and I get it. Politics played a part, a big part in this, 100%. You could tell me any different, because the puzzles are all coming together, but don't call me a liar. Don't call me a liar. I work too hard. I have too much respect for myself and for other members of the community, call me a liar. I'm not a liar. Those are facts. So I don't know if you people know what that is, true facts. Those are your emails. And they're just going to keep foiling requests. Because what's funny is, is that something stupid like this, not stupid, but big thing, it opened up a lot of people's eyes in this community. A lot of people's eyes. Right, wrong, Goshen, pro-Goshen, this, that, blah, 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 it opened up a lot of people's eyes. And I'm going to still continue to keep coming to these meetings and believe, fight for what I believe in. That's what I'm going to keep doing. I'm also going to keep fighting for the, the members of my community and my neighborhood, which recently, we just had a big order of doors, lumber, tile delivered to one of my neighbor's houses. Don't know what they're doing with it, but there's no permit in the door. So, we just keep on doing things the correct way.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment portion. Village Presidents Report, the only item I have is on the agenda, we have a donation for the Mantino Historical Society. Every year, the village gives money, as we talked earlier about the, as mentioned earlier, to the sporting groups, also to the historical society. They've had a number of different projects going on over there over the course of the last several years, trying to upgrade the facility. And this year, we approved at the Budget Committee donation of $1,500, so that will be going out after today's or tonight's meeting. Village Administrators Report, Mr. LaRocque, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing this evening, but remind the trustees, please turn your mics on when you're speaking and off when you're done. Thank you.
Committee Reports, Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one item under consideration. I'm also going to approve the purchase of a 60-inch rotary motor from Brown Equipment Company, Evansville, Indiana, for a cost of $69,827.50. This is a, should we like to state bid or whatever?
Yeah, this is a, a Sourcewell, HGAC, it's another company that does statewide, nationwide bidding for material products.
This is the one we discussed at the Board Meeting, here at the Committee Meeting.
The next Public Works is 7/23/24 at 7:00 a.m. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Boyce, Property and Recreation, Mr. Martin is not here tonight, Mrs. Dole, will you take his?
Sure. We have consideration, a motion to approve a contract with PISO and Associates, Leland, Illinois, for a controlled burn and a seeding of Rock Creek Wildflower Pollination, Pollinator Area for a cost of $13,646.52. We discussed this at several meetings, and I know that Jim has worked really well with, and now we've all met Becky, so thank you for coming to the meeting and giving us these nice pictures. That controlled burn and necessary to do this to progress of the Rock Creek Wildflower Butterfly Area.
Do we know when this is going to take place?
Late fall or early spring, depending on...
Okay. Just to make sure that they communicate with the fire department and have, you know, I'm sure that we're going to want to have, you know, individuals out there...
They have a pretty elaborate process of making sure all the residents are aware, they're going to get, it's a...
They're going to have hangers or notify?
They'll have hangers. It's, they have to get a permit through the EPA as well, so it's a, it's a pretty, pretty big deal to make sure.
Well, I think they should probably notify the fire department well in advance, so they can make sure that they don't have anything else going on that day.
It's in the fire chief's backyard, so he's going to, he'll know all about it, so he'll make sure.
Okay. Okay. That it, Mrs. Dole?
That's it.
Public Safety and Health, it's yours again.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Ordinance 24-06, an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property surplus municipal equipment. This is also because we are getting some new police vehicles and coming in, get outfitted, and we'll need to surplus the old vehicles that are going to be replaced. Did we, are we definitely trading them in, or what, as far as the cars, or when they come in?
Yeah, we typically get a couple of new sports cars each year and surplus the old ones. They don't actually trade them when they sell them, but, you know, we use them to our old sports, high-end sports cars.
Okay. Thanks. That's all, I have, my next Public Safety meeting is July 10th at 7:00 a.m. here in the Village Boardroom. And as we've talked about, you probably heard on the radio all day today about, we've had few incidents of theft in the area. Here are a few tips to follow from our Facebook page. Please be aware that there has been an increase in reported property crime and suspicious activity in the county. It appears the suspects are not from the area. We ask if you see something suspicious, you call the police, 911 for emergencies, or the CANCOM, not emergency number, 815-933-3324. Remember to help you and us, you should keep your doors locked, take or hide valuables from your car, turn on your exterior lights at night. Also, if you don't already have them, consider installing security cameras. As an incentive, the village is once again offering security camera rebates for applicable purchases and installations. And the $100 camera rebate can be obtained, informed, can be retained on the Village of Mantino website for those that live in the Village of Mantino. And Jacob, did you want to talk about the fireworks and cruise nights that are coming up?
Yep, sure. So, another busy week here in Mantino. We've got our cruise nights coming up from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. again here on the South Side of Main Street. And then Mantino fireworks are July 3rd, thanks to the Mantino Sportsman's Club, they'll be having entertainment. I believe the South Side Social Club will be there. Plenty of food, activities, that runs from 7:00 to 11:00, and I think really, any viewing spot in Mantino is the perfect viewing spot. So yeah, just another jam-packed week here in Mantino and celebrating Independence Day.
Actually, that's not all, because we have the Barbie movie at Legacy, and that's on the 11th, and we don't have a meeting before that, so promote Barbie, will you?
Yeah, next week, we've got our next installment of Movies in the Park, we'll be playing Barbie. We've got our sponsors out there, the Mantino Wildcats will be running concessions. It's just a great time to kind of come out there, the weather's, it looks pretty nice, but you know, hit up the splash pad, play in the park, and just plan to spend the evening at Legacy, so.
Oh, and cruise night, too, tomorrow night, did you say cruise night already? Yeah, you did. I'll be quiet then. That's all.
Chief, will you be putting out things for parking then on the, along Main Street, obviously for parking or traffic control?
For, for July?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll put something on, sure. Where you can park, remember, and things like that.
Do you have other departments or other agencies coming?
Actually, please, Sheriff's Park, all of them, especially getting people out, it's a big time.
Yeah, everybody congregates over a six, seven-hour period, and they all want to leave in 20 minutes. Is that it, Mrs. Dole? Okay. Planning and zoning, Mr. Crockett.
Thank you, Mayor. I have an item on the agenda this evening, it's Ordinance 24-07, which is an ordinance approving the preliminary and final development plat plans and a special use permit for the lifestyles of Mantino Planned Unit Development, governing approximately 15.57 acres of vacant real property located northeast of South Creek Drive and Marquette Place South, which has a PIN number of 030221217024. This is a project that has been in the planning stages for several years. I know us as a board have requested several requirements on this development. And Chris, if you could just refresh us all on what is the special use permit being, being asked for?
Yeah, so a planned unit development typically is able to get variations to some of the development and zoning requirements that we have. A couple examples of that are South Gate and the Enclave, those are both PUDs as well. Typically, it might be that the roads are not built to the village standards, and when that happens, obviously, we, we won't accept them as village roads, so they stay private roads, which means they have to maintain them and fix them and plow them. So that's, that's part of the process for a planned unit development, is that they get the special use permit to allow those variations to the zoning and construction ordinances.
Are there any other questions among the Board?
If I could just make a comment, I know that earlier on, public participation, Ms. Fama made mention about a bad idea of this being located directly across the school. Just to make it clear, earlier on in the year, Matthew Glenn came from the school, representing the school, had concerns, and we've adjusted, or I should say, the developers adjusted the plans to meet that. And last I've heard, Mr. Glenn came and said that the, the school was happy with the changes that have been made. I don't know that, does anyone have any information contrary to that before we vote on it? And then the, the other thing is, this is one PIN number, so the, given the special use permit, roads, this is all going to be owned by one person, it cannot be sold as individual units, correct, Chris?
That's correct. That was one of the requirements that this Board asked for. It will be under single control and single ownership for the entire time. And even when it's sold, it has to be sold to single ownership and single control as well.
That's all the comments I had regarding that.
I do have a question. I don't know if, Chris, you can answer this, or Jerry, possibly. When is your anticipated start, start time of this project?
How long is this, is there a timeframe on how long this is good for? This can obviously, it can be started as soon as possible, but when is the deadline that it has to be started?
I believe they have six months, either pull a permit or get started on the project in order for it to still be valid.
Okay. And if it, if it's not started in six months, then it has to go back?
It would have to go through the process again, correct?
Okay. Yeah.
Our next planning and zoning committee meeting is scheduled for July 23rd, 7:00 a.m. in the Village Boardroom. And the next planning commission meeting, which was scheduled for the 9th, has been canceled. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. The next item is finance, Mr. Geske.
Thank you. I have Resolution 2404, a resolution approving an agreement with MC Squared Energy Services LLC and Illinois Limited Liability Company. This is for electrical aggregation. We've been doing this for, I can't even remember, 10, 10-plus years?
Yeah, and that, you know, the, the, the village receives a donation from them in order to continue this. There's no law or obligation of anybody to, you know, to go and to do it. If they want to, they can, they don't have to. One of the reasons they'd like to continue in this, even when nobody is doing it, is because the process to start it up again, you know, is expensive, and it's cheaper for them and easier for them to just continue it as it is now. Back in the day, where this one started, comm ed's rates were a lot higher, and it was more economical for people to take advantage of this. Now those rates have come down. If it changes, we still have the option. If it doesn't change, people can do what they want to do.
And the consumers, each individual household can make that decision for themselves.
Nobody's mandated to do any...
Benefit to us is a $10,000 donation to the village. Next item is Ordinance 2405, an ordinance amending Title III Business Regulations, Chapter 7, Itinerant Merchants, Section 3-7-5, license fees for the Village of Mantino Municipal Code. This change, we talked about our last finance meeting, and it basically comes down to Oktoberfest and trying to help Jacob out with making sure Oktoberfest is a success, and it's waiving the fees during Oktoberfest for some of those vendors who would come and, and participate in Oktoberfest, so.
This is strictly for that period of time, for that event?
Just for the Oktoberfest. So there'll still be fees if someone wants to come any other time. In addition to that, I have payment of bills in the amount of $248,823.15. Bills, and there were no TIF bills, bills authorized and paid between board cycle of And our next finance committee, committee meeting is on July 10th at 7:00 a.m. right here. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Geske. General Government, Mr. Phillips.
I have nothing on the agenda tonight, Mayor.
So the items that we'll be voting on on the consent agenda are as follows. Under Old Business, we have Nothing. Under New Business, we have Resolution 2404, a resolution approving an agreement with MC Squared Energy Services LLC and Illinois Limited Liability Company. Item number two is Ordinance 2405, an ordinance amending Title III Business Regulations, Chapter 7, Itinerant Merchants, Section 3-7-5, license fees of the Village of Mantino Municipal Code. Item number three is Ordinance 2406, an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property surplus municipal equipment. Item number four is Ordinance 2407, an ordinance approving the preliminary and final development plaits and plans, and a special use permit for the lifestyles of Mantino Planned Unit Development, governing approximately 15.57 acres of vacant real property located northeast of South Creek Drive and Marquette Place. Under the warding of bids, we have a motion to approve the contract with PISO and Associates of Leland, Illinois, for a controlled burn and seeding of Rock Creek Wildflower Pollinator Area for a cost of $13,646.52. We also have a motion to approve the purchase of a 60-inch rotary, rotary mower from Brown Equipment Company of Evansville, Indiana, of a cost of $69,827.50, which is a Sourcewell HGAC buy price. And also, a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $248,823.15. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be voted on individually? Seeing none, I'd accept the motion, take a single roll call vote on the question of passage of the agenda items as read.
I make a motion.
Motion by Phillips, second by Boyce, roll call.
Phillips, Boyce, Dole?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Motion carries, I accept the motion to approve by ominous vote, the ordinances, resolutions, motion and orders contained in the consent agenda as read.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dole.
Second.
Second by Geske, roll call.
Dole?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
And Phillips.
Motion carries.
Yes.
Motion carries. Comments tonight, you have anything you want to talk about, Mr. Boyce?
I agree, I'm looking forward to working with them and seeing them. And also, I hope that everybody has a safe 4th of July, remember, lighting your own fireworks is not legal, so let's just let the professionals do it. That's all.
Mr. Crockett.
I second Diane's comments to the team.
Mr. Geske?
Have a safe 4th of July.
I agree.
I've got a couple items tonight, just, Jim, can you give us just the status of the community center? I mean, people can smell paint when they come in here, obviously, what's going on here?
Yeah, we started the rebuttal, the main community side, new flooring, new paint. In the kitchen, we're putting new cabinets, and then going into the foyer again, new flooring, new paint, painting all the walls, doors. I mean, this room feels different already with just these white doors instead of the maroon. We put a new door to this back entrance here. Over on Channel 4, we also did another door over there as well. Going to get a couple white fixtures and can lights in the front, get that all dialed up.
What's the time for him on getting it back to normal?
Cabinets were delivered today, we're installing tomorrow, granite's going to be measured up Wednesday, and should be all put back together. The next event is the 13th for that room, so we'll be in good shape.
Thank you. The final item I have is I received a letter from trustee Sam Martin, dated June 28th, 2024, Mayor Nugent, Board Members, and Village of Mantino Officials. Effective July 2nd, 2024, I am resigning my position of a Board Member for the Village of Mantino. Samuel Martin. So we will be taking the appropriate steps to fill that spot over the course of the next...
60 days?
Over the next, course of the next 60 days. I have nothing further, I'd accept the motion to adjourn. Motion by Boyce, second by Crockett, roll call.
Boyce?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming, for watching.